Okay, I will go and give me one second and call the meeting to order. Start with a roll call McKee here Lanterman.
Here.
Uh, Council Friedrich is out with bad weather, I believe, and Council Verica.
I am still here.
Nichols.
Also still here.
Perfect. I'll take the stand and join me to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda approval, um, I believe we have one.
We removed item H, uh, that was the revision, and then Mr. Mayor, I would like to add on item four, I do have a quick presentation, let me get to that.
Okay. I will make a note of that. If I skip it, uh, which I shouldn't because it's the next item, just step in. Uh, any other changes? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
I will second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Presentation.
So Mayor, Council, and members of the public, uh, it took us a while to design our beautiful Corcoran logo, and, um, and we tried to put it on our water tower and just about everything else we've got. We've got logos, uh, that we've done, because we take a lot of pride in our community, and we want to communicate that pride. And so staff has been working for a while to take it to the next level, because we also want to recognize those in our community that are, that are contributing extraordinarily. Uh, and what does extraordinary contribution mean? Well, that has a lot to do, the eyes of the people, right? And so, uh, what you're going to receive tonight is a packet with some coins. So, uh, we have this beautiful Corcoran logo coin, and then on the back of it says, uh, "For excellence in serving the Corcoran community." And then around it, it has our three dot "Vibrant Connected Community Preserving Natural Character, Agricultural Roots, Established in 1858." And so, uh, staff are working, Alicia and Brian Ganner, uh, got these for us, and they just arrived. Uh, they are numbered, and so every, uh, every one of these tokens is accounted for. And so as we present them, or as you present them, I would ask that you work with Brian. Uh, so on the accounting side of things, we have to account for how they are being distributed. Uh, and so each of you will receive ten to distribute. Uh, and so also our department heads will receive ten to distribute. I wanted to start out with the first ten, uh, by recognizing the ten people that have done extraordinary, above and beyond, helping me do what I did in, in my time here, and particularly during 2025. And so I'd like to present the first one, the Mayor McKee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ooh, my lucky number.
And.
Cool.
My team, Alicia. And our attorney who keeps me out of trouble. I don't know if every senior administrator talks to their attorney as much as I talk to John, but, uh, we've become grateful. He didn't go to Roatan with me, but, uh, but he was there with me in spirit, so.
So what you're saying is John's got one friend.
Uh, so, so these, uh, these are, are how I'm choosing to do my ten. Uh, you all get to make your choices on how you distribute yours. Natalie. Matt. Alicia. And there is, uh, a brick that says, "Please distribute this to acknowledge instances of going above and beyond providing service to the Corcoran community," and you'll receive more coins. So these are for 2025. Uh, on January, at the January council meeting, uh, we'll give you the allotment for 2026. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Say, Jay.
Yes, sir.
Some of us may want to give coins to the same people. It might be helpful if as, like, maybe on a weekly or monthly basis, the lifts get circulated to those who distribute them, so we're just aware, oh, Tom already gave one to this person. Maybe I want to rethink how I would give mine.
That's a great suggestion. We'll do that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty, on to, uh, open forum. Do we have anyone who opened the forum, and if so, Jay will walk us?
Uh, I have not received any cards, but if anybody would want to come and speak on something that's not on the agenda, uh, they fill out a card, they present it to me, they have enough to exceed five minutes to discuss their topic. Uh, we've received no cards.
Okay. And we'll move on to consent agenda, which consists of items six A through six E. Does anyone want to pull anything?
Is that right?
Yeah.
It is. Thank God.
I would like to pull C.
Like to pull C, okay. C, Jeremy, anyone else? Twenty-one, twenty-two, so. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, and D through G.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
C, Jeremy.
Uh, I, I want to propose that we follow option three, but before I do that, I just want to give context for those who may revisit this topic in the future, just to try to reestablish what council's intent was when we created the rental license policy. So, when we were trying to craft that policy, we were aware that there had been legal precedent. When people were in a position in housing downturn 2008, if I recall correctly, uh, there were rental license caps that prevented people in some cities from being able to rent out their homes. And we were trying to avoid creating that kind of a situation in Corcoran, where somebody was in a position of having to move away, and they were not able to sell their home in that current market, there needed to be an out for those people who already owned a property, needed to relocate, and couldn't sell the home. Uh, and that's what the intent of that exemption practice was for. Person in that situation who, their job is transferred to Japan, and they're moving out, they can't sell their home, they want to rent it out, but the rental licenses are full in their block. That person was supposed to be able to come to council, plead their case, and council granted exemption for that person in that situation. It wasn't intended to allow council to, allow an investor to buy a property in an area already saturated with rents. So, I would propose that we continue to adhere to policy as adopted by this body two years ago, one year ago, uh, with that message that you're more than welcome to buy property in Corcoran as a rental. You just need to be in a place where we have the appropriate number of licenses available.
Most of them. Uh, did you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll make a motion to without the option three for packet content.
Second.
And that, just for clarification, is on page two of that item?
Yes.
Can I, whoop when you're ready?
Go for it.
I just want to ask a question. Why was that a consent item when we needed to make a decision? That makes sense? Alright, otherwise if we didn't remove it, what, what have we done?
Obviously, it would, it would have been option three. It would have obviously been with no context.
Gotcha, okay. Sorry.
From, have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are done with consent, moving right. Uh, alrighty, we have one planning item. Um, don't know if there's anyone that would like to speak, uh, for public comment opportunity on it, just checking? Nope, okay. And we'll go into seven A, which is the Ravinia Ninth Edition PUD Amendment.
Alright, yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council members. This is an amendment for the Ninth Edition. I have a couple slides, uh, to highlight what was in the package just for the public. If you go to the next slide, Jay. Uh, Lennar is requesting a PUD amendment to modify the landscaping in two cul-de-sac islands in the Ninth Edition. That's Primrose Court and Sunflower Court, identified on the screen with the two red Xs at the end of the arrow. And, uh, the change is to allow construction, um, without irrigation, and some changes to the landscaping to reflect the fact that the islands wouldn't be irrigated. The streets were built without irrigation, and so, um, that was identified by staff as a correction. They've asked to be able to modify the plans. And it's in front of you tonight, because that was specifically listed as one of the PUD benefits, is landscaped irrigated, uh, cul-de-sac islands, uh, and boulevards. The new islands would, in staff's opinion, be well landscaped with drought-friendly plants if approved. If you go to the next slide. In exchange for the flexibility of the PUD amendment, uh, Lennar was asked to provide some other public benefit to offset that. And what they've proposed is donation of a shade structure for Wildflower Park. This is an example image of a shade structure. The actual specifications were also in the packet. Just not as pretty, so I put this one in here. So we met with park staff, and they recommended consideration of, uh, location shown where the, uh, orange box and star are on the screen, near the playground, should the council, uh, approve the PUD amendment. The proposal from Lennar was to donate the structure, the shade structure, and then provide that to the city for the city to install with a concrete base at some future date. We, staff that is, um, put together a couple of options for you. If you go to the next slide, Jay. We talked internally, and I outlined some of the issues in your staff report. Um, is the shade structure desired? Does it, uh, provide at least as much benefit as, uh, not having irrigation in those two cul-de-sac islands? And is the city of funding available, uh, for the city's share of the structure? There were some things to think about. Uh, if you do recommend approval tonight, we will send this to the Parks Commission next week to look at a location for that structure, uh, so that it would be theoretically possible that we could do it yet this year. Next slide. So there are three options in front of you this evening. Um, option one is the proposal, um, from Lennar. If the council finds that the shade structure offsets the PUD benefits of those two landscaped islands for the Ravinia neighborhood and the community as a whole, then you would recommend approval of the PUD amendment as proposed. That was option one, and there was a draft resolution in your packet. If you find that the donation of the park shelter does not provide the same benefit as those two irrigated islands, then you should recommend denial, uh, and that's option two in your packet. And then, um, option three was something that staff talked about, and I have spoken with Lennar about, uh, and that is sort of, um, a modified version of their proposal, which is to say, Lennar would provide all of the materials for the shade structure, including the concrete, and we would work for how we would get that done. And then staff would simply provide the labor to install the structure. I did not include a resolution in the packet. I did include a red line on your desk tonight, and I'm realizing I forgot to send it to Lennar, but it says that. If it's passed, they'll send that, and that's the option three version. So, uh, Lennar is here tonight as well, and Kevin and I are happy to answer any questions if we're closely with Kevin on this, as this is sort of the infrastructure puzzle.
Quick couple of clarifications, I think I know the answer, but just for the record. If we were to approve this, the islands would still be landscaped, it would just be a change of the type of landscaping to something that could survive without regular irrigation.
That's right. There'd be two main changes. What we would do is we would add a three-foot,
Concrete.
Concrete strip around that, uh, which would reduce some of the, um, uh, mulch, or near the curb, which Public Works supports, and it would still have mostly, uh, native grasses, and there would still be one tree in the center of the island as proposed today. But those native grasses are more drought, drought tolerant and don't require the irrigation.
Gotcha.
Is there enough area there to support those trees when they get to be full-sized?
Uh, we believe so. We did look at it with a landscape architect, so that's been in there and unchanged, and that reduction of that three-foot perimeter still remind, remains, uh, adequate for the types of trees that are proposed.
You said one tree?
One tree, in each island, yeah.
Are those trees already there?
I think they are, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I asked a question without asking you first. How did we miss this as far as irrigation and everything else? How was it missed?
Well.
Or is it? When we've done it, and when we've done it in the other cul-de-sacs, right? The other islands in Ravinia are irrigated?
There was a lot of missed irrigation. They've been installing a lot of it over the last two months.
Uh, you, I'll be quiet.
You, no, feel free.
No, I just, just so much is missed and whatever, and overlooked, and it's just, it's frustrating when we've got an agreement and, well, wait a minute, it's not convenient, so we'll buy a building. I, 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 if, if anybody's going to put it up, I don't want our staff to put it up. I want Lennar to put it up, if we're going to do that. I, 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 it's a mistake on their part, or is it a mistake in combination with us?
I, I think it's their responsibility to make sure that's built and planned. And, and this has been known for a while, not necessarily Cory's here representing Lennar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the difference here is that it's our park versus an H O A turned over entity. So, we did build the park originally, right?
No, I understand that.
There's some element of us controlling, like, the park, that is part of why the alternate, how it came to be alternate.
So then.
So, so a desire to maintain a sense of ownership and.
Yeah, this, we, it is, we built the park, so it's just we generally build our park versus having someone else do it, so.
Understood. So then my issue, it goes down another way with that answer. Then, whatever the cost of this needs to be, then that money needs to be given to park dedication, and then parks decide what goes on with that, whether it's in Wildflower, whether it's in our, we're, we're, we're changing and doing things in Heritage Park, and we were talking, we weren't going to do much of anything in other parks until Heritage Park got done. But now we're adding an amenity to a specific park and those kind of things. Do you, I hope you understand what I'm saying.
So, if, if I understand what you're saying, if I can recap, uh, what you, what I hear you saying is that, uh, the value of that should be contributed to park dedication, and then that potentially invested someplace else.
Invested in what Parks Commission talks about, or our staff talks about?
So Parks did, was, was talked to about this, and they see value in this, in terms of, uh, contributing. To, to your point, I had this understanding too, that, uh, no, no additional park dedication dollars were going to be spent on this park until other park development had occurred. Uh, and that, that's, that's how it would have been communicated to me.
But we talked to the Parks Commission?
This, this was discussed with them, yes.
Okay.
Or staff.
Just staff.
Staff, and then, but it has come up before with the Parks Commission, the desire to have a shade structure in Wildflower Park. And I do, I, I do think.
I just don't, I don't want them overlooked. I mean, I, I get feedback from planning and parks saying, you're making decisions without our input, so I don't want that thing.
Next week, it was more of, if, if council wasn't going to be in support of it, it didn't seem worthwhile considering the parks and trails.
Okay.
But that was why it was strategic to pick this in front of you tonight, so that it could go in parks and trails if it wasn't done.
Okay.
I would argue, I would argue it's not, I'd correct you if I'm wrong, this isn't park dedication money.
Right.
So I just, we use the term park dedication money and ask on the park, this is not park dedication money.
Because this is a benefit that otherwise would not occur, but for this circumstance and their proposal.
And the, the PUD that we're being asked to modify should have benefits to the larger community. And I think this would. I, I agree with parks dedication being allocated toward additional areas, which is why we're doing City Park, Heritage Park now. I don't think that precludes us from working when we have opportunity in other areas.
Is, is the, what's the cost of irrigating the island?
Two islands?
Is it comparable to the cost of the donation of the structure?
It's upwards of.
I'm sorry.
Sixty thousand dollars. I think, I think the proposal was to have a one-to-one benefit, not, not necessarily a cost-to-cost benefit, but a one-to-one benefit to the community, whereas, you know what, a strip of, um, size sixty-five, probably has equal or less value than a park structure that a community could.
I, thanks, I, I cut Jeremy off, I'm sorry.
So, I agree with, I think it was you, Dean, who said, "It makes sense for us to accept an alternate if it's of sufficient benefit." I think if Lennar builds it, as well as doing it's the material, that gets closer to an equal value. Uh, I think it would be a fair value if there was also maybe like a basketball half-court or something that was installed at the same time, because that park has a lot of use. It's, there's a, a lot of kids from multiple neighborhoods who congregate there and use it regularly. It's always been very hot. There's not a lot of shade on the site. I think this meets that need. Uh, there's also not much for kids who aren't, you know, ten years or under to do at that park, because all that's there is a play structure, and they grow out of that relatively early. So having something that would be an amenity for older kids, I think, would be of value as well.
Thoughts on that regards regarding feasibility or, or spacing of that? I don't know if we have the space for something that.
Well, I, I do think that there's templateed for the future, the potential of a half-court, uh, if I recall from some of the plans that I've seen. Uh, but I think an important feedback would be, you know, Cory is that, within the relevant feasibility, uh, as, as you approached us with this as a proposal, and could I get you, because it's, I want.
Oh, I'm right.
I get you to come up to the microphone, thank you.
Which should be, it's pretty self-explanatory, I think.
I could be wrong, that's not a judgment.
We gotta agree. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, we have not discussed, uh, I guess the basketball court was, you know, a new, new thing that we haven't talked about, but, um, we felt the original proposal was, um, of equal value to the islands. So, um, I don't know that we would, we would go above and beyond that at this point.
Sure, just wanted to ask.
Yep, fair enough.
Uh, one thing to counsel, if we are considering this, my strong preference would be, be updated. Option three, that Kendra had, uh, made for a draft, or, uh, resolution, which includes all of the materials.
And assembly, or?
No, that would be something by Public Works adding.
I, I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Public Works actually would want to assemble it?
Yeah, I think the, the middle ground option that we developed was, and, uh, was basically materials supplied by the developer and install it. That was the approach that we did with the original part, and that we thought was an alternative to the potential gap.
Has the HOA been informed of this? Did they express that position?
I spoke to the HOA president, um, yesterday, and she wasn't super familiar with it, but the general idea she seemed, thought it made sense, and didn't have any strong objection.
Because when they had the HOA meeting, they talked about, there was proposal to connect some residence irrigation system to these islands as a long-term stopgap, which doesn't seem likely to be a great proposal. Um, so I, I think either of these approaches is better than that from a long-term sustainment perspective.
Not to dig up old things, but where are we at on punch lists and stuff? The conversations related to sidewalks, still creatures growing out of them, and replacement, those kind of things?
We're really close, and we probably, I think at the next meeting, we'll have several additions proposed to close out. There's fifteen, that won't be all of them, but I think there's been a lot of them. They've done a lot of work. Issuing this is one of the, this is basically the biggest unknown decision left. I think we'll work through Lennar and try to close it out.
There's a.
So we're anticipating bringing, uh, several phases, uh, that just, uh, for, uh, October twenty-third for closeout renovation. And to be put into warranty, so that, that just puts them into warranty.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, are the sidewalks better? Have they been replaced?
They were replaced last fall, and they were growing through again in the spring. Where they were growing through has been ground down and tarred. Um, and we have not removed the willow to drive this to this point.
Right. The only way you're going to be able to do something is you have to put a barrier down. Even if you dig it up, you're going to get a dig up there.
We did put in several hundred feet of barrier, uh, last fall as well, at the same time as prior to replacing, as a way to deter some of the.
It, it's, it's been frustrating through those residents and such, so I'm, I hear a lot in such, so. Thanks for the effort, and it's, I'm, I'll be quiet.
Uh, I like the option, or I guess the modified option that Council, uh, Nichols had with a, with the sport corridor, the, the half-court, but if I understand you correctly, that's a, that's a deal breaker, is that correct?
At this point, yeah, I, I don't think we would.
With that response, then, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, option two then.
I'll second. Clarification, can we do a motion, a second?
It's, it's upon me.
Okay.
That's for denial, let's put it right.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that?
I'd, I'd vote differently if, if things would have been better, a, a better relationship, things completed on time, those kind of things, but, I did, good motion.
Would it be different if it was a different amount of, is, is it the principle of it, or is it the perceived value?
Oh, for me? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to him.
Uh, no, I, I mean, it wouldn't be fair to make a decision like that based on principle. I just don't see the value, uh, to the neighborhood. And I think what, uh, Councilman Nichols said, I, I thought that that was a, a good idea, and I saw that as a, as a huge benefit to the neighborhood. But assuming, uh, that, you know, Lennar sees that as a, as a no-go, then, uh, you know, then I see this as a no-go, and, uh, again, I, I made the motion to adopt, uh, option two and deny it.
Yep. Let me just throw one up, uh, before we vote, but then Jeremy.
Sir, I, I just want to continue the comment, quick, thank you. There's nothing that stops us from creating our own shade structure as well. If you have a substantial amount of park dedication, if there is a value, sounds like it's not going to be a huge amount of additional effort for staff to construct it, if we're willing to do it if Lennar provided the material. So we could make that a goal for 2026, or even 2025 if we chose to. So, for me, that's why it's not a benefit, because we could easily do the same thing ourselves.
For thirty-seven thousand dollars?
It's almost forty.
Forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and the, the playground that was put on there is like sixty-five K to install, so it's a very underdeveloped, low-cost park as it is. I think you can certainly make the case that, in order to achieve parity with the new parks that are going to be built in Delaware and in Heritage Park, and then whatever we're going to call the Tavera Area Park. Um, it'll make sense to look at that in the future regardless.
Okay. Before we take a vote, um, I would throw, just to see your, um, interest level in this or feasibility of this, if we were to consider something like that option three with all of the materials plus a, um, picnic table or table and two benches to go in it? Would that be something that you think?
Yeah, we would be open to that. Yep.
So, that's, perhaps a little bit, um, that's where I think I'm, I, or I, I rest.
I, I would still be against it, because I don't think taxpayer money should go to paying Public Works to erect this, you know, shape, you know, whatever you call it, this, uh, shady building. Uh, I don't, I don't know why Corcoran taxpayers should pay to build that.
But I think that Public Works is planning, they prefer to do so.
Oh, I get that, but why should we have to pay for that?
If we do it ourselves, we'd be bad.
Well, or maybe Lennar should. Well, or maybe Lennar should cover the cost of that.
Of the install?
Yeah. I mean, who's covering the cost of of playing the irrigation? Are we? No. So why should this game be different?
I don't, I mean, we technically have an hourly rate and fee schedule that's published, so I don't know. That would be, I can't speak for Lennar, but we technically have an hourly rate and fee math and equipment rate, it would be we'd be able to calculate some basis for equipment and labor. I'll just take into the question of how would we calculate it? Would we come up with a way to calculate it if that was part of our consideration?
We added that in as that calculation for what we estimate the install cost to be.
It would be on time and materials, basically, so I won't be able to tell you the number value, but we would be able to track our time and apply some basis for equipment and labor.
John, do you see any issue potentially amending in language that's, you know, plus reimbursement for installation, calculate that.
Yeah, right. Mayor and Council, I I I think you could build that in as as a kind of an intended option three if you want to. Um but you'd probably wanna just specify in direct staff to schedule it for a long moment, just so we know what facilities.
Yeah, that would make the most sense to me. So that's an option. Zoom in that in to an option three. We do a vote or we do a motion in a second, so. Does anyone else want to discuss that before we vote?
Mark, Councilmember Landerman brings up a good point. If the labor is included in the costs and the fee towards Lennar, that would be an option for me.
We could amend that into the resolution.
Were the benches part of the original proposal or is that an addition?
That would be an addition.
Because the picture shows benches, but maybe that wasn't part of the bill of materials.
I think that was just an example picture.
That was just because I think the specs are not very nice to look at. So that was just an image of what it looks like completed. It does not. Their proposal was just the specs that's in your book, which is not any benches or picnic tables.
So.
Oh, so no no benches?
Well, here's what I would propose to clarify, there'd be the option to deny, which is what we have on the table to vote here shortly. Or what I would do if that does not succeed, uh would be to amend option three to include whether it's a picnic table or table and two benches at determined by the planning or Parks and Trail Commission, whatever fits best with our park. Um I think we have a itemized list of types of benches and stuff. Have we created that?
How you have these already, you have some.
So whatever would fit that, so it'd be it would add add in table and benches and add in that cost the calculation for reimbursement of the installation.
And a corporate flag.
We can do the corporate. So did I clarify the two options?
A quick suggestion, we've got one motion seconded also on would it be better instead of us sitting here and putting the whole punch list together and everything else that we maybe table this and let some negotiation happen and come back next meeting? Or is that out of?
I mean, you certainly could table it, I think, um but if I'm not sure what we would be tabling it to do. We'd need direction about what we were tabling to do if it's to get a cost estimate from Lennar uh installing the shade structure as proposed with a bench or picnic table combination, we could certainly do that and they could revisit whether they still wanna perceive as a PUD amendment under that scenario and bring back those costs. We could certainly do that.
That's what I'm asking.
Or.
But you could make the motion today.
We brainstormed.
I I did make the motion today. Um I I feel worried about that. I I think we could maybe add language to the effect of it's this, if not this. And we add the existing plan.
Mayor, I think the risk of tabling it is just that it probably wouldn't happen either the irrigation or the work this year.
I was I was.
Two weeks is important to get them included out.
I was going down the road of what would be best and not to change the motion in in the second on the on the dice yet right now, but.
We wouldn't change it. At least we're still going to vote on this.
Okay.
And if it passes, then it passes. If it doesn't, then someone.
Has to follow up.
Bring up a follow up. Make sense? Okay.
Accept.
Any other questions?
I'm more comfortable now that it is not the city's responsibility.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that fails three to one. So I will make a motion to amend the resolution, I believe it's twenty twenty five ninety five. To include, as we discussed, uh the materials as is red, all of the materials as is redlined in Kendra's version. In addition to a table and bench or picnic table, whether it's all one thing or three separate things that that park you can decide that or staff can decide that. And the cost for installation being reimbursed based on the PUD schedule.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a friendly suggestion? The way I heard that, sounds like only one table in a twenty by twenty foot structure seems a little sparse. Do you wanna do two tables?
Maybe pull up the picture again.
Is this a meeting next week?
I would I would like to involve.
This resolution to
a minimum of or not to exceed.
Minimum of between two and four?
Two picnic tables or the equivalent, something like that, equivalent structures in the.
Structure, given the latitude of benches make more sense.
Okay, yeah, I'll take that probably two. Two picnic tables or the equivalent. Okay, so staff give my motion then?
Yep.
The way I second.
How many are in the photo that we saw?
Four.
Is it four?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I would be clear, I'm not certain this is the same size shade structure. It was just intended to show how it could fit in the park. Um so I apologize, it's a.
What what is the size?
Twenty by forty.
The size proposed is twenty by twenty, which is on page.
Fifty-eight, I believe, how's the dimension?
Yeah, it's a twenty by twenty structure. I guess I don't see the page number on there, but but it's very similar looking to that. I just I I wanna be clear, I don't know for sure that that was the same size. I don't know.
That was other renderings that we were given from the manufacturer, but again, I don't know that that's for sure a twenty by twenty.
So was there any other further questions on that or is there a second?
We're we're writing it in all costs there. By Lennar.
But the city and they will reimburse the city rate at our at our adopted rate schedule. Because we still think it's important that the city do the installation.
We understand that, but uh.
And we got the two equipped.
The two picnic tables or equivalent.
Or tables that can have their picnic tables or equivalent, yep, and all materials plus reimbursement.
So with that, where did that picture come from?
Kendra.
We were given that from the manufacturer of the structure.
Okay. Now, whereas this one shows two long picnic tables and then one outside of the structure? So depending on the size of the picnic tables, too.
I mean, it feels like looking at it is probably a twenty by twenty. I just wanna be weird that I don't have any information to actually give me the dimensions.
To would give us a good start and might be the right fit exactly, and if not, it still, I think, adds value in that a lot of times people are bringing in a chair to the park, but don't have a shaded area to sit. And if all those table area was being used, you could take your full chair and put it in the shade area.
Oh, look, looking at this, you know, I I I think we should get four benches out of it.
If I could propose something, if I did use to kind of work in the world of picnic tables and benches a lot. Uh so so the big difference between these is this, you're gonna get one or two butts per seat around it. This one, you're gonna get four to five on each side, but there's only two picnic tables on here. So I think your suggestion of two or the equivalent gives a lot of latitude to figure out how to maximize the space for people. Whether whether that be a a combination of picnic table, couple benches, or whatever it is, they'll they'll figure out how to maximize the twenty twenty.
Again, with Parks' involvement, Park Commission, cool.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, on to, we have no unfinished business. Uh new business, we have three items that are all public hearings. We'll start with nine A. And I will go ahead and open. This is for the Certification of Delinquent Recycling Fees to Hennepin County. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
To the no public members.
Natalie, do you have any uh passionate comments about it?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Perfect, and then uh the item itself. Or who's doing that? Item itself.
Oh. Can I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty five ninety one?
Certifying the uh delinquent recycling fees to Hennepin County?
Correct.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I and B. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty five ninety-two certifying delinquent water and sewer utility fees to Hennepin County.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, nine C. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh all those in favor say aye?
Aye. I move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty five ninety-three certifying twenty twenty five delinquent escrow account balance.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Good job.
Obama would be proud.
What's that?
Obama would be proud.
He would be proud. Mark's proud.
Staff.
Well-oiled machine.
Staff has no reports, Mr. Mayor.
All right, staff has no report. Council reports.
I I one, whether it's not, whether it's an issue or not, um or longest-serving reserve officer, if if folks don't know, is not doing well. He was a reserve, was a reserve officer for us in the city for over forty years and uh there's issues, so keep him in your thoughts and the family in in your prayers, please. John Keeter is who I'm talking about. We celebrated his forty-year, three years ago, four years ago. And uh it is. Yep, so it it just, we we talk about exemplary deals and volunteerism and all that stuff. You guys have heard me say we need volunteers for the city to exist and such. That is a volunteer that will be cherished of that, so just at that point.
Thank you.
Uh only thing I have is, I think I mentioned this earlier, I'll leave meeting with um Representative Morrison on Tuesday along with some other mayors and I please try to uh start the conversation on funding on that process again for for the city hall project or some of the projects we have going on. Do my best there and you'll also maybe look into the state, you'll look into the state lobbying process at some point as well. And that's really it for now. Um anyone else? Okay, uh city council's schedule, just to clarify or highlight, um oh, actually, I did have one other thing prior, sorry. Uh if you're listening now and you haven't seen it yet, we're up for Water Tower of the Year. Go on the city website or socials and you can click the link and vote for our water tower. It's open through the seventeenth of October.
A national competition.
You can vote once per email address, so hop on there.
I got plenty of email addresses.
Go go. It's open till the, you can get it for free. It's open till the seventeenth and uh yeah, so.
Vote now, vote off.
Share it on social, spread it, vote.
I bet you can't get us over a million votes, Councilmember Landerman. I bet you can't.
If we win, I'll buy daily bucks.
There you go. But yeah, so that should be on the city website and socials and there's some QR codes around the city hall that I have hanging off right now. Other than that, city council's schedule, next meeting is the twenty-third, work session at five thirty, council meeting at seven. Followed by the next meeting would be uh November thirteenth, work session at five thirty, meeting at seven. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.